Gavola Sin, we're here today to do a Nuasis County Commissioners Workshop. The day is July 26, 2019. It's 9:10 in the morning. I certify. We have a quorum present. All Commissioners are present. And would you all like to at least do the pledge? Thank you. There we go. I'd like to do the pledge this morning and to Texas as well. So let's stand if everybody would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to these, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. At this time, I'm going to ask the deputy if there's a roster. Do I have any public comment this morning to consider? Okay. In that case, hearing no public comment at this time, we'll move right into the workshop. And we're going to receive a presentation and discuss the Nuasis County Capital Improvement Program by Lockwood Andrews and Noonam, otherwise the acronym of LAN. And let me just set the stage that for the past few months, LAN, as you know through your approval, has been working diligently to do assessments all over the county, having tackled some of our largest county facilities. In addition, they've been working with staff, particularly in the Public Works Department, because of the infrastructure needs in roads in particular. They've also been coordinating with risk management, our public adjusters. Timing actually was quite good on that regard, that our public adjusters were also assessing many of our county facilities for Hurricane Harvey damage. But today, what's before us, and we're going to get this presentation, is an opportunity to see where we are at this point. We are not done with this plan by any means. This is what you need to now go and meet with them after you've had some time to digest this. Do not panic or get alarmed or concerned that you have not had the opportunity to have a full vetting. Their job as engineers is to look at everything. Now, our job as Commissioners and Judge is to see how they've made these assessments and find out if there's any gaps for them to address. So I want to make sure that unless you happen to just on the sly have been a civil engineer in your nightlife, you're okay. We've allowed them to do their work as engineers. And now our work as policymakers is going to be to see where they need to continue to address in the time that they have left. So with that, Tony, welcome.
Thank you, Judge. My name is Tony Boyd, and you just took away all my-
I'm sorry.
Just to kind of recap where we are. Consider this a baseline document. And this is not the final version of what that baseline document's going to look like. It's more or less a way we came up with presenting the data we've got today. And then I'll briefly summarize it. But there's a lot of things in here about in the neighborhood of 300 line items that your staff has pointed out to us that are in need of some capital input in order to do it, in order to maintain buildings and improve buildings and things like that. Again, this is a baseline. This will be a continuously changing document over the years. And I'm not close enough to the mic. Thank you. So I don't know whether your staff will update it every year or every six months, but it will be continually updated with the needs that they see and that you agree with that need to be done. Decisions that have to be made and other information that has to be added is where are the funding sources for these projects? Are they grant funds? Are they Hurricane Harvey funds? Are they BP funds? Are they going to come out of debt or certificates of obligation? Those kinds of things have to be determined, working probably with your financial advisor and your grants program. And then there's the schedule of the project. What can we do this year? What do we need to postpone to next year and the next year and the next year? So it's a long-range plan for how you invest your capital into your existing facilities. And the judge mentioned civil engineering. What we found as we went through this, this is more of an architecture job than it is civil engineering. A lot of the projects here are in your building and facilities that you have. And you manage a pretty large portfolio of real estate. And so keep that in mind. You've got a significant investment. I believe we were told your insured value of your buildings that you have insured is $660 billion or something like that. So if you look at it, you've probably got $1 billion in assets that you have to manage. Well, this CIP is a way to manage the ongoing O and M as well as to look at upgrades and additional facilities that you need. So with all that background, there's a lot of decisions to be made. There's a lot of prioritization to be done. And those are policy issues that y'all are going to have to address. And we're here to work with you through that and help get to a document that you can then take and use in the future to build on. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, who has quite a bit of experience in assets like this and maintaining them and funding them and things like that. So Kyle's going to go through the details and then we'll stop and just talk about this. I think his presentation will only last about 30 minutes. So we appreciate your time. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Tony. And just for those that are watching and don't know, CIP, of course, we have the benefit of having it on our screen, stands for Capital Improvement Plan. And most urban, let me ask the question, not make a statement. Do most urban counties have capital improvement plans within their county?
Yes, they do.
We heard from our financial advisor, Estrada Inahosa, that he recommended a capital improvement plan. And so I just want to make sure that the audience who's listening and watching know that this is in keeping with best practices for urban counties. And quite frankly, without a capital improvement plan, you do not have a financial advising plan because you haven't married what you need with what you own or have or could borrow.
That's right. You need to be able to take this information and predict in the future what your needs are going to be financially. Thanks for bringing it up because I didn't mention it. This is a financial planning document also. And it does affect your bond rating and it affects the interest rates that you pay. So it's very important from that standpoint. If you look at it in return on investment, you know, to be able to maintain a good bond rating, it's a really good return on your investment as well as a necessary document for managing your assets and planning for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And since we have Judge Etheridge here, I don't mean to just talk about those big eight urban counties. They're good for any county. I'm sure Hays County benefited greatly from a CIP when you were the county judge.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thank y'all for first taking the time out of your busy schedules to come and meet here on a Friday morning. If you're looking at the two documents that are in front of you already, that's kind of a spoiler alert. But let's work through the presentation first and then we can talk about the two documents that you have in front of you. Those two documents that you do have in front of you are a cut sheet basically on each of the 30 project packages that we've put together. And then the 11 by 17 is a list of those projects with just a little bit more detail. We'll talk about more of those details. But let's get into the presentation and let's push through that and then we can open it up for questions. And so to start things off, I'd like to explain three specific things. One, where we've been and where we've gotten to now. The second part is where we are now. And you've heard Judge Canales and Tony talk about where we are now. And then finally, the third piece is where do we need to go from here? So kind of as a launching point, this is where we've come to today. So we'll talk about the CIP project overview. You see that list on your screen. How the project package summaries so far have been developed. Cost estimates, funding breakdowns, and then a project prioritization strategy that we've started with as a framework. So let's get started with that. So back in late May, you gave us a work authorization to start this capital improvement plan process. And in that capital improvement plan process, we needed to collect information and data from your staff. And that's where we've gotten to now, where we've reached out to your staff. I've probably got 200 or so emails from different departments and different people about, hey, we need to add this or consider this as part of the CIP for this building or that building. And so we've gotten a lot of information. And what it's been so far is a real organizational effort. It's taking a lot of information and data, associating it with facilities throughout your county, and putting those into a project package breakdown. And so finally, again, what we need is consensus to finalize this document. What is your priority? You're going to see a big number here in a couple slides. But are those all priority projects for you, for the county, for different themes that we want to address? So the methodology in getting this information is first, we collected and compiled data from building lists that you've provided from your insurance register and then listed projects and needs associated with each one of those buildings that you have or potential projects that you want to address, such as new buildings. And so this list of 284 projects goes all the way from, I need new dishware and curtains and poles at the fairgrounds, all the way up to we need a new facility to replace these old facilities. So that's the range and breadth of projects that we've got in this list. And it's been a big organizational effort. But I think we're in a really great spot now where we've compiled that list from a bunch of different sources within the county. We've also developed opinions of probable cost. Just a fancy way of saying cost estimates for each one of those line items. And those cost estimates, I'll talk in a little bit more detail here in the next couple slides. So I alluded to it, 284 projects and needs have been identified. That list was actually a little bit more. It was about 300 or so, a little over 300 different line item, project by project, need by need. And in some cases, as we have talked with staff and as we have looked through that list, a perfect example is the Hilltop Community Center, where you have over $5 million of needs that have been identified. And based on the insurance register, that facility is worth about $6 million in replacement value. And so that was apparent to us that reinvestment in a 1955 facility is probably not a great investment. $5 million and the replacement value is $6 million. And in the facility management world, we call that a facility condition index, and that's a score. That's not part of this project, but it's a thing that we've inferred and understood that we said, hey, look, we probably just need to replace the facility with a new one at Hilltop. So that's one of the projects in the CIP. So that list of 284 project needs has been consolidated into a list of 30 CIP project packages. That's what we'd call it. So I don't want to mix projects and projects, but the name is kind of the same. So we're calling it CIP project packages. When I held up this document that you've got on your list here, that's those 30 projects that you have. So how do we package those projects up? What we did is we looked at location by building or campus. We looked at the project type, whether it was a renovation or a new facility. We looked at the project need and the classifications of each of those individual 284 line items. And then we did our best to understand the relative priority of each one of those 284 projects. We also thought about a project procurement method. So whenever you lay out a big project package, you also have to think about how you might procure that particular scope of work. Am I going to do a competitive sealed proposal? Am I going to do a construction manager at risk? These are kind of some things that we think about in the program management world when you're putting together big project packages and you're thinking about how to execute a large program. And so those were all considerations as we developed this project package list that you have in front of you. And the reason that's important is that we're going to eventually need to do those projects some way, somehow. We're going to need to execute them. And so this is the big payoff here. That 30 projects currently amounts to $151 million. And you've already heard Judge Canales and Tony say, okay, that's the list. That's our comprehensive understanding currently of what it's going to cost if you were to execute or try to execute all 30 of these projects.
At the same time today?
Right.
Today's dollars is really where I was headed.
And so the way to think about this is that's a big chunk of money to bite off. And the reality is, is that we're probably not going to want to bite off and chew all of these projects all at one time or even take some of these projects out of our list of 30 projects. And we'll talk more details after we get done. But one of those is the Records Warehouse Building. That's a facility that you currently rent that would cost about $8.5 million to renovate if you wanted to stay there. And so there's a lot of decisions and a lot of unknowns associated with our understanding of that facility and probably a better decision to make a different decision than renovating that facility. So that's the type of mindset that you should have when you're looking at these 30 different project packages. Does this make sense for us where we are right now to reinvest in this facility? There's a lot of details that go into that decision-making process, considering a backup or a line item by line item review of, okay, what 19 line items are in the county courthouse building? Are those or are those not priority, reality, that sort of thing? So when we develop these project priority sheets, what you have in front of you is a general overview of what the project contains. You have a project title. There's a generic image of the facility if it applied. There's a prioritization. We'll talk about how the prioritization themes were developed and scored. Then there's a project description, kind of the, you'd call it the objective language that's associated with the project. And then a why statement. Why would we need to fund that project? Or what kind of decisions do we need to make about this project? Then you have an estimated cost. There's a breakdown of four different components. One is earmarked capital, operations, and maintenance, and then potential total from outside funding sources. Each one of the projects and the project packages contains that breakdown and then a total of what a whole kit and caboodle might cost to accomplish that project. You have an estimated project schedule, which was really just a ballpark estimate to get the mindset of, how quickly could we execute this project? How much might it be drawn out depending on a lot of variables? And then lastly, some projects have some additional project considerations. What you'll see as you thumb through some of these project sheets is the suggestion that there's a facility that has some improvements associated with it. Paint the exterior of the facility. Replace the roof. Rehab the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems in the facility. And what we've suggested or what we've identified is we've said, wait to do that project or reinvest in that facility based on its age or its needs. And one of the high priority items that we've identified here is to do a facility condition assessment throughout the county so that you can make those determinations about what your facilities look like currently from a comprehensive standpoint and then use that as a launching point to develop a long-range facility plan. And so in those cases where projects are called out for facilities that are old, we've identified the need to have some additional conversation about those facilities. Getting a little ahead of myself, but when we talk about cost estimates and the engineer's estimate of probable cost, there are several things that have to go into that decision. In each one of these project sheets and on the large 11 by 17, the project costs that you're seeing have some escalation factors built into the capital costs and the operations and maintenance costs. Capital costs and operations and maintenance costs have escalation factors that can range in between 5% to 50% in addition to the baseline cost or the raw cost of accomplishing a project. And we can go into details about that if you have more questions. But some of those escalation factors that you would need to consider in executing a facilities or roadway project have to do with time-related factors, economic factors, and what are considered soft costs or sunk costs when you're doing the construction, like architects' fees, engineering fees, program management fees, furniture fixtures and equipment that go into the facility. All of those considerations have to be included so that you get an overall picture and a view of how much that project might cost. Another element of the decision-making process for you to consider is funding sources. So funding sources are an important piece of the conversation so that you can get an understanding of how much capital expenditures might cost and be associated with each one of these line items. Earmarked funds or already funded projects are those round one accessibility projects that are unique to the county and the top 10 facilities that have been identified with those round one accessibility projects. We've been told that there's already funds set aside to accomplish those round one accessibility projects. And then you can just read the list here where there are potential TIF funds. There's CDBG money. There's insurance money to accomplish some of these projects. So we've associated each one of those funding sources with each one of the 284 line items so that you can get an understanding of how much is it going to cost me, the county, to do these projects? That falls into the bucket of earmarked capital and operations and maintenance. And I think I have some animations here on the slide. I should have hit that. So the outside funding sources are boxed there in the green. That's what you could expect from an outside funding source. Capital and operations and maintenance could potentially be debt that's issued by the county through certificates of obligation. And then again, earmarked already funded projects are those accessibility round one projects. So again, back to that $151 million total. This is your breakdown, beautiful green pie chart, with $120 million of capital funding associated with each one of those projects. So if you're considering that, that's what, 80% of the $151 million that would be funded? We would expect currently to be funded through capital funding? So that's where that lies. And then we took a cut at that $151 million and how it might break down year over year for the next five years. So if you were to bite off that $151 million, how that might play out based on the project schedule that we've got laid out in each one of these projects? And that's just a straight line divide math by five to get these projects. For the county roads, for example, I'm holding up my sheet here. If you're looking down at that estimated project schedule section, if you started in January 2020 and took it all the way to Christmas time of December 2024, that's a five-year project. The division, that $38 million is spread out across those five years so that you can just kind of get a picture, a baseline, of how that funding might need to play out. And again, this is not a final. This is what you've got to spend for each one of these projects. If we were to take one of these projects and say, push it out two years, then that would change this chart that you see here on the screen. And so as we're working through this project and looking at and considering these 284 line items, $151 million, we said to ourselves, gosh, how are they going to, how are they, you, the Commissioners and Judge Canales, going to prioritize what's number one? And so we took it upon ourselves to develop a prioritization strategy for your consideration to start with as kind of a baseline, a starting point, to understand what priorities should be made from a consensus standpoint about these projects in our county. How can we come together as a group and decide what's top priority out of these 30 project packages? And so if you think about that as a filter or a sieve, you're taking these projects and you're putting them through this filtration process to come up with a priority. And so we developed four themes. The four themes that continued to come up as we were looking through each one of these line items was asset investment. And that asset investment prioritization strategy depended on, are we reinvesting money in an existing facility? Are we, or a road? Or do we want to invest in a new facility? Those fell into that bucket and got a top ranking on a score basis. Economic enhancement. Are there projects that are identified in this CIP that would enhance the economy here in Nuasis County? Projects like rehabbing or extending the airport runway, adding new hangars to bring new businesses in. That got a top ranking on the economic enhancement strategy or theme. Community enhancement. Hilltop Community Center serves a ton of people in that area. And so that got a top ranking in community enhancement to serve your community with a new facility. And then there was a bucket for judicial law enforcement and community safety betterment. That bucket or that theme bubbled up out of the judicial facilities that you have with projects associated with them. Community safety and betterment had to do also with roads. If you're going to improve the roads, you're going to improve the safety and betterment throughout the community. And so each one of these four themes were ranked and prioritized against each one of these 30 projects. And each one of them got a score. So if you were to look on your county roads project sheet, that first one up here at the top of the stack of papers in front of you, you'll see those four different themes listed here in your prioritization information. First, there's asset investment. And if I'm looking at my score and how do I score and prioritize this project, I'm saying that completely meets the criteria of the theme to give that a high score ranking. Next is economic enhancement. If I'm improving the roads, the thought process behind there is that I'm probably going to meet the improvement of the economy by improving the roads in my county. Same with community enhancement. So I'm kind of running through a scenario of how we develop that project prioritization theme. And so if you were to break this down in a percentage basis standpoint, that got a 90% project priority score. And among all the 30 projects in the CIP project packages, that ranked as number one. That got the highest score for meeting each one of these themes. And I kind of stole my own thunder here where I'm giving an example. But again, here's a second example for the courthouse projects. So there were 19, I believe, different, yep, 19 different needs or projects associated with this facility that were identified by the staff. And so you have a project description that matches that project description within your packet. So projects that this project group are associated with the county courthouse. This is your project description. A variety of renovation, deferred maintenance, site, exterior, interior, mechanical, electrical plumbing. So a whole lot of projects, those 19 projects, are associated with these different disciplines, if you will, within the facility. And then you have a description of why the project is needed. And so we get that filter out and then we apply our considerations for asset investment, economic enhancement, community enhancement, and then judicial law enforcement and community- economic enhancement, community enhancement, and then judicial law enforcement and community safety betterment. The compiled score, don't think about this as a test, but the compiled score is a 55%. And so the, the ranking of the, the ranking of projects here at the courthouse, if you were to have to make a cut line decision, the project ranking is 16. There were a couple of different projects that ranked at that 16 level based on these themes. And again, the themes are not set in stone. There were just a way for LAN to help us understand or help you understand what could be priority or what needs to be priority here for the, for these CIP projects. And so this last slide is a list. You have this, you have this list in, uh, this is a consolidated list. You have the same list here in the 11 by 17 in front of you where a project ranking is provided for each one of the, the projects, uh, the, the score for each one of those projects, and then the total costs associated with each one of those. It's the same information in this packet of 30 CIP projects. And, and I'm not going to switch the slide, but the next slide is basically our call to action here as commissioners and judge to start making a decision to begin this workshop session, to talk about questions, to have discussion around each one of these projects. And I think what the best use of our time would be to talk about a project, for example, any one of these projects that you would want to talk about and how we take that next step in prioritizing our project. So, so with that, that's, that's the end of me spitting out a bunch of language to you. And we're ready to take questions and receive feedback and really want to treat this as a workshop session to where we're all in the same room and we can start coming to a consensus and, uh, starting to understand what each one of these projects are. And we're prepared also to show you the spreadsheet that we have. So if you would want to go and look at the details of, hey, what's in the proposed studies planning project, Kyle? Well, I can pull that here, up here on the screen and you can see the five different line items, sorry, three different line items that are associated with that particular project. So that's where we, that's where we are currently and we're happy to take any questions.
Kind of a general just comment, Judge. And I appreciate your, your initial statements because this is a ton of information to digest of which I, I haven't had much time to do that. So we may need to come back and do another workshop or something later. But I guess just a couple of general questions is how, and, and you talked about it a little bit, but how, how did, and tell me how you like, how, I'm assuming this is one through whatever. I've looked through this as quickly as I could. And when you rated them and came up with the priority, tell me just a little bit more about how you did that.
Right.
Was that with, in other words, what I'm looking for is, go ahead, I'll let you answer. Sorry.
So what we started with is grabbing, putting, putting our arms around 300 plus projects. And that list was huge. And so then we took that and then took the, the next step we did was took each one of those 284 projects and packaged them up into what I would consider a project package. Then from there, we said, okay, how are we going to prioritize and rank those? We developed four themes for your consideration and then filtered that project, the associated projects within that CIP, the, the needs, the pri, the projects, and filtered those through the asset, uh, the asset investment theme, the economic enhancement theme, and all, each one of those four themes to at least start with something to say, hey, I do or don't agree with how you got this ranked, Kyle. And I want to see more details about those 19 different line items that you've got. But it's at least a starting point to get to that next conversation.
And I guess.
That was the example of the 55%. So the rubric, this doesn't necessarily mean that these are ranked in priority as the county sees it. This is a ranking based on the metrics that they've come up with within the metrics to figure out how they ranked. And they chose obviously the ones you see here, economic, community, asset, and judicial. Now he wants us to say, remember, you know, to kind of go to the next level.
And like, and then what I was kind of looking for and, and just make sure, because I know I haven't met with you guys, I don't know if everybody else has or hasn't, is.
Oh, just to be clear, we, we have not individually met with any one of you as commissioners.
Nor me.
We've received input from county staff for those two, to gain an understanding of those 284 projects.
And I, and I guess where I'm going with this is what I hope this would be, and I think, and I wanted you to answer it before I told you what I was really looking for. And I think you kind of have is, is what I was hoping this would be was something that y'all would do, a, a, a rubric or however, whatever word the judge used there and, and that it, it didn't become a political document. It'll become a political document because we'll sink our teeth into it and then we'll, we'll start prioritizing it and figuring out where it goes. So what I think you've told me, which I think is a good way to start is you've come up with a method, whether we like your method or not, you've come up with a method.
You can totally.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not. I haven't had enough time to digest it to do that, right? I don't know.
I'll talk to you next week.
You're right. Let me, let me read this, let me read this for a couple of days. But what I'd hope this would be was, would, was a non-political document, which it sounds like that's what you tried to start with was not coming in and saying, okay, you know, let's take Carolyn Vaughn's input and then we'll get, I, I would rather you do it based on your.
As objective as possible.
Right. And that's what I was looking for to begin with. So I think that's what you started with. And, and I appreciate that. And I think that takes some, you know, should be taken, you know, note of, because certainly there might be some ones on here as I skip through this where I go, huh, well, that may not have been what I would have said, but Joe Gonzalez might say the same thing. It might not be what he would have said in a different way. So I, I appreciate that. And that's really, I don't, and Judge, I don't mean to not have a lot of input today, but I just didn't, I really don't know how to.
Well, I, I'll tell you, that's okay. I mean, look, today is just, number one, I want to get us out, we've, we've trained, at least what I've seen the last seven months, workshops are not workshops. I want to train us to actually learn how to do a workshop. And this is a great way to start. You have to maybe take it in, in several phases. Today is you need to see what they've done. What we have done is every week Juan Pimentel through Public Works gets an update from LAN. And actually he shoots that over to my office and I get to see where we are because I've been monitoring on our behalf as a court to make certain that we're going to meet these, you know, deadlines that we've set for ourselves. And of course we did because today was the day that we wanted to see this presentation. So Juan and, and, hey Juan.
There you are.
Juan and Kyle and the team from LAN have been meeting regularly. And then once we've met collectively to also say, are we gonna, can we meet these deadlines? I was involved with creating the deadline for today. What you really have before you and what he's not telling you is the entire computer, I, I mean, you have put in, I can't even imagine how many man hours, but you're welcome to, to share that with us. But to get the 280 down to 30 is a feat in and of itself. And that's so that you guys, all of us can have a working document that, that really makes sense. But for example, when you don't put funding sources next to it, the number one priority could now be eradicated. And let me, let me explain what I mean by that. I want to take ADA phase one. What Kyle doesn't have in here for you because he's not going to, that's the next part, is we already have dollars allocated for that piece of that pie. So number three, or wherever it is, let me see, it's number.
I'll, I'll give you an example. If you were to.
Round one.
If you were to consider the county courthouse, there were several different projects that have been identified here. Gaskets on the atrium windows, new elevators here and here and here, um, a, a litany of projects, new terrazzo floor. And also round one accessibility projects still need to be done here. And so we, we saw that, identified that project. And instead of doing a package of round one accessibility projects, we said, hey, we've already got some projects that are identified at the county courthouse. Let's do the accessibility projects, the gasket replacement, the, the elevators, the terrazzo floor, the, the new exterior on the facility, all at one time so that you save costs in design work from an architect and an engineer that would have to be involved in those particular scopes of work and design documents. And let's do the round one accessibility projects. Let's do the capital improvement dollar projects. Let's do the maintenance and operation projects all at one time so that you can save in design cost, construction cost. You wouldn't want to piecemeal this facility as a bunch of disparate project packages. You might phase it out based on an engineer or an architect's recommendation so that you could accomplish the construction piece of it. But to package it all in one, let's do that as one project. And if you were to look down into the details about the county courthouse project, you'd see that we've got the earmarked funds. That's, I think, I'm going from memory here, a, a little over eight million dollars of round one accessibility funds at the county courthouse. That's, that would be paid for separately by funds that you already have that are earmarked for those accessibility round one projects.
And, and I guess, let me, just to finish my train of thought that I was trying to get to too, that, and, and I think that's a good point, Judge. We, we want to do better workshops, but part of being able to do better workshops is being able to get this information prior to when we got it. So when we're training ourselves to do better workshops, that has to be part of it because I got this on the 24th at.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, which means.
You didn't get.
Tried the best I could. Then we had a hard time getting it to print out on our, you know, so, so, and, and we all have other meetings and things like that. And so I, I did the best I could to jam in what little I could, but to have an effective workshop for me, I can't digest 35 or 40 pages and, because I had, you know, so that, that would be part of what I would have maybe said, okay, we didn't get this till 5:30 on Wednesday afternoon. Maybe we push this workshop back a week so that we don't waste your time coming over here and doing this because I got a ton of questions, but I just.
Well, you need to under, I, I hear you, but in this case, you have to hear his methodology for you even to look at this information. It won't make no sense to you unless you actually get the PowerPoint. In this case, I'm going to respectfully say that you, you just, I didn't even look at it until this morning because for me, I got to hear the methodology. I have to understand how you arrived at the rubric for me to even now look at it. All I wanted to accomplish today was for you to have the information and from, to hear from Kyle as to what's here before you. So now your job is to now really go back and, and look at it. But now you haven't formed any preconceived opinion as to how the prioritization, you understand now the methodology that he utilized. And again, once you start to study it, the real exercise is to, we talk about it in terms of, oh, we've got elevators, we've got chillers, we've got hilltop, we've got that. But it isn't until you see it in spreadsheet style, I don't think, that you can really get your arms around 150 million dollars worth of projects and how that might look over time. And the, and the capital infrastructure that has been deferred, the needs that have been deferred over time, really you get to see if you, and these are just arbitrary metrics because you could put 10 more metrics and get a completely different ranking. The idea here is just to show you under these metrics, this is what the compiled score generates. It's not to say this is the best method. It's not to say it's the perfect method. It's just a way to organize data. So think of it as an organizational tool for data. Don't get hung up on what's number one or number 30 right now. All that is, is to show you if you use these very generic, good metrics that are used in other types of formulation. If you really wanted to do the very best thing, we don't have the time or the dollars at this moment, but for example, you would do a facilities deep dive into just the courthouse or just the jail or just whatever you think is, like I would say, if, if I were private company and Kyle was my, the engineer, I'd say, Kyle, anything over a capital investment of 25 million needs to have a complete facilities assessment. Okay? That, I would create those metrics for myself because it's such a huge capital asset that I can't just make decisions over time about that 25 million dollars investment unless I see, oh, 20 million of it is a new chiller. Oh, I get it. Right? So you get a facility, you, you, you deep dive into the one asset. So what I would encourage us to do is to, we'll look at the calendar with Tyner and the team and see when we can come back. But it might be helpful to at least go through an example of one or two of them so we can pretend that we're in our offices, but we're not here together. So you could ask Kyle as you're looking over, we can take any of them if you want to.
Let's, let's look at.
Take one.
Look at the records warehouse building.
Can we talk about methodology though?
Absolutely.
I mean, Judge brought it up, Commissioner Chesney, I think is, is also concerned about. So you mentioned early on, your approach to this was getting feedback from who, staff?
County staff. That's what we were.
So was it every member of county staff? Was it voluntary that they contribute information to you? How did that work?
Judge Canales, can you explain what your instructions were?
Absolutely. My instructions were is that all county facilities have internal plans already on how they deal with prioritization of projects. Your first place you start is your public works department. Juan had already, under my instruction, worked on a top 10 list, but he had about 30 county roads. So we started with county roads. In addition, this court authorized balance companies to, to look at all county facilities that were of a certain value or more for Hurricane Harvey damage. That meant they were going to look both interior, exterior. And that included everything that you would think, all community centers, courthouse and jail annex, all the big ones. So they looked at that from, quite frankly, doors to roof. And then in addition, Tyner had already prepared a huge project that analyzed all ADA. So all the ADA studies and, and all of those facility assessments just for ADA came into the package. And then in addition, we asked all department heads, anybody, so anybody from Jason at the, uh, department heads and contractors that do work for us. So like, for example, the fairgrounds had already done their own internal, you know, look, that's where we started. We started with data that the county had and owned and compiled, but we went to all what I would call service departments. So everybody from the medical examiner's office all the way to, I'm trying to think of the smallest one. I don't know what the smallest community center might be that, that we looked at, maybe Bishop or Driscoll, but.
Van Kety.
Van Kety. But yes, your department heads are in charge of maintenance and operation. Your department heads have directors that work on facilities. And so that's, that's where we started. When you're looking at capital infrastructure, it's really buildings and roads first. We also included informational technology as capital. So we visited with IT and asked them to also do a deep dive into their infrastructure plan as well. We, we considered IT infrastructure for the purposes of this assignment.
All right. Thank you, Judge.
Judge, did you tell any of the department heads to turn any of the CIPs that they needed into anyone? Because I was told that Kara Sands was not asked. So was there a memo or something that was sent out? She said something about needing new.
Voting machines. New voting machines? She just got new voting machines? Huh. Well, all I know is that I thought we were, we were pretty clear, not only through our emails and public works. Look, here's the idea. We've never done this before, ever in the county. We've not done a capital improvement plan before. So I'm not surprised if we're going to find some gaps. But the good news is, is that this is not a, this is not a final document. If there is a department head that we overlooked, for instance, you know, if there's a capital need, I can tell you that I was forwarding emails up until a week ago. Anytime I saw an infrastructure need, I would say forward to LAN. I'm trying to think of, if I called it up on my, I mean, Andres was the recipient of many midnight, because what would happen is if I saw something, like, let's say the legislature required us to get new voting machines.
I think we got those two years ago.
We did. And she might be referring to a, a new requirement that the law has, is provide, is, is needing. But the point is, if I saw that coming from TAC, I would forward to Andres as governmental affairs and say, hey, looks like the legislature is requiring us to, let me tell you, let me give you a better, a better example. The legislature is requiring county court at law. The legislature is requiring county court at laws to now have twelve man juries instead of six. In some courthouses, they already, they have courtrooms that are designed just for six, just for six jurors. Now the legislature says you got to have twelve. That is an internal, in my mind, oh my gosh, that's a capital need, we might have to put twelve people. It turns out our courthouse doesn't have that issue, okay? But the point was, boom, that would have created a flip for me of a need. If I missed Kara's department, I'll make sure, but what I don't want this to turn into is what we didn't do. I would like it to be a celebration of, oh my gosh, for the first time we have a, we have our arms around, I'm going to say ninety percent of what our needs are. And this is an all call, and you can ask Tyner, we made a decision today to be on video and to be, obviously a posted, all workshops were posted, but we made a decision to be on video today so that everybody's put on notice that, what did we leave out? What did we miss, right? Because we'd like to make sure that we have everything considered. And Kyle wouldn't mind at all running it through the computer system that he's created to see how voting machines or any other infrastructure. But we've been talking CIP since February, so I, I think everybody kind of is aware and knows about it. We also have staff meetings with all department heads, not electeds, but department heads, but I can tell you that, that any email that we got, we were able to, to forward and say, please take this under consideration. But we probably need a billion dollars for, for everything.
And that's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
So if anyone comes and says they did not know, they're hearing now, so.
That's right, and we're, and we'd love to hear it, and we'd love to have it in. I'm trying to think of any other good example that we had. E-CIVIS, anything that came up through the normal course of agendas where we went, ah, that's a CIP thing, you know, we sent it over. But again, if it's a ten thousand dollar item, it didn't make the top thirty list, right? But it doesn't mean it's not part of the-
Well, it, it, it is inclu- every-
Everything.
Every two hundred and eighty-four line items is packaged in these thirty projects.
Okay, so E-CIVIS probably was in there, I think I put some software in there.
Software is it-
It is in there, right?
Is, is down here.
Sixteen, okay, okay, great. So it did get in there.
I mean, may, I don't know, is there a project that you know about that you want to bring up that we need to add to the list? That's-
Yeah.
That's what we're here for.
May I ask a question?
What would be some of those things, Commissioner Chesney?
I don't know, I got to look at the list, that's what I'm saying, I got to go through and really look at all these line items and see and go talk to people in my area, I mean, that's what I'm saying, that's, I, I got so little today and-
What's, what's one of them? What's one of the projects?
What's one of the projects what?
That, that you would need to do or accomplish.
Would you like to share, like, do you want him to look at one of them?
No, no, I'd need to go back and see what's on here, and if there's something not on here, I-
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying, I, I've just started digesting this and trying to do the best I can. I, I don't have any critiques right now, I was just asking how we got here, and I just am going to need to come back at another time, after I have time to go back and really digest all this and talk about it.
One of the conversations I had this week with Mr. Pimentel was, hey, what about, what about the new animal community building? Did you, or, sorry, not animal commi- animal control facility, is that on the list? Yep, it's on the list. Well, what about Hilltop? Is that on the list? Yep, that's on the list. So I, I feel very confident that we have a very-
Yeah, and again, I'm not critiquing, I just haven't had a chance to-
Right.
This is just a ton of information, that, that's all I'm saying, I just need to come back another day.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
Like on county jail projects, that's a big one for me, because I think that's a big priority for this county. Within county jail projects, do you have anything that shows us what those projects were? Because you're talking about around ten million, and I'm going to go back to the Hilltop, because that's in my precinct, and I appreciate what you said because I agree with you. Before I got here, they spent around two million on that, and that's an old building, and now there's like one point four that was projected to be spent on a roof, which is ridiculous, and we've got that way, way down. So I think my question, the jails, the jail building is very old, so this must be projects within that building, but yet you said if it's very old, you need to look at it and decide, do you want to put that much money into a building that's that old? So is-
So what, what I'll call up here on the screen is the backup. So these are, these are the projects, these are the projects that have been identified by mostly your county, and, your county staff. So, one inmate transfer metal door, fifteen thousand dollars. Replace thirty air handling units over thirty-five years old, the average is forty-five thousand dollars each, that's a line item. So these are the two hundred and eighty-four line items, and if we-
And is that one, this?
No, no, it's, it's not, and we didn't want to overwhelm you with more information.
If you're going to give it to me, give it to me.
So here's what I, what I will suggest based on this conversation, is that we put together this list of the, whatever, three, five, ten, twenty, thirty different line items for you to review and say, look, I, I, I understand now what's, what's in this package.
Right, because that's what I couldn't determine what's-
Right.
-in the package, I, I, maybe I was missing something, so I didn't want to sound, you know, like I didn't know, but I mean, now you're telling me you haven't given that part to us, and I'm sorry for interrupting you Carolyn, and, but I mean, I, I need, like, I need project one, let's say, and then all the line items in project one, and project two, and all the line items in project two, because-
Yeah, just do the top thirty.
However, well, the top thirty has-
That is all of them.
That's all of them, because how, the top thirty has the two hundred and eighty-four, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, we don't have that yet, and again, not a critique, just saying, I, there's, I got very little-
Yeah, just get your Dropbox ready, that's all, because this will not be emailed, you'll have to get a Dropbox set up.
Just print them all for us, or, I don't know, there's got to be some way to, like, I'm a notebook guy, I like to take it on the reading.
What we're seeing here on the screen is, the, what we're seeing here on the screen is, you talked about the county road projects. These are the nine county road projects that were identified by staff. So county road CR sixty-seven from State Highway forty-four to CR twenty-eight, that's-
That alone's going to take me hours just to go back and get on the map and look at all, I don't have them all memorized, and, so if you could, if, if someone could provide in a method for me, and I don't have a best, I like a notebook, I, you know, I tell, I'm old school-
Me too.
-I get it, but I like to go home, read my notebook, highlight things, because I can't do that as well on the computer. So what I need is all of these projects, like I said, county road number one, and then all the thirty, or whatever number there is in that one, so that I can go through and, because I'm going to analyze every single solitary in one of these-
Oh, okay.
-to see if they need to be there, or where they need to be in the list, or, you know, I don't, that's the only way I can attack it, like-
One of the-
I have a question, I don't know if sixty-seven actually hits forty-four, does that, does that-
I'm sorry?
Sixty-seven, does it hit forty-four?
These are projects that have been provided by your county staff, so-
Juan gave him this list, let me, let me tell you what I'm, we're going to do. Tyner, we'll get this from LAN, we'll send it downstairs to RICO, make everybody a notebook.
I was going to recommend that Judge, and if you can stick around with me so you can help us organize it.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure that, that you've got that. And again, remember, the idea is, is that the, you'll get the detail, and then it's, it's to get you comfortable with the idea that this county has hundreds of millions of dollars worth of capital projects, and here is how we arrived at the totals based on the line items.
No money.
And no money, but having said that, we're going to address the funding sources.
And that, and to talk, sorry to cut you-
Go ahead.
To, to speak to that, Commissioner Gonzalez, using the first project here on the, on the first, on the first project of the stack, thirty-eight million dollars of county roads. Are we, are we really going to, are we ready to spend thirty-eight million dollars on roads? Well, let's look at the line items here.
And do you prioritize them by line item too? Do you, like, in the line items, do you say?
No, that, that was just, that was a, that was a conglomerate of, here's all the, here's all the county road projects that-
We have to do that then.
Yeah.
So you're just going to list them, they're not in any particular order, you've got the priority by, county road is number one, but within number one, you're not going to list one through fifteen in the county roads, it's just going to be a mishmash, and we're going to have to figure out which are the most important.
Well, except for that county roads have already been prioritized within the county by-
But not every county road is as important as the other county road.
No, no, let, okay, so LAN's job is, he made county roads-
Right.
-together, it got ranked as, what if you did all county roads? But if you wanted to get what you wanted, Juan, as part of this notebook, just for county roads, just because I know we have it, Juan, with the best blinders he can put on, has already done the prioritization for you based on his rubric, which he can show you.
Well, that would be good to have.
And he, he's, he's got that, number one through ten.
So we've got that on county roads.
There's, there's a-
Hold on, hold on, so if Juan, if you can, that would be super helpful, if I know that Juan has prioritized, hopefully with no political influence either, just with his influen- you know, just with, I, I mean, this is what I'm looking for, we, we can change it all up, but I don't want anybody up here to have any influence over Juan right now, right? Okay? So if Juan can put that in there, but then, that's on one, and the other twenty-nine, there's going to be some line items within those other twenty-nine that we're not going to have someone to prioritize, so we're going to have to go through and, and do this, because once we pass this in its final version Judge, it's going to be the roadmap for which courts will work for years to come, so we can't just do like, you know, one of these ones that have twenty of them and just leave the twenty without priority two, so to me, we're going to have to prioritize all the line items within the big categories.
Hey, I, I would probably not, I would tell you that everything is dynamic. If we had passed my transportation fee, we would have paid for those thirty-eight million dollars worth of roads, so in twenty-twenty-one, when I get that transportation fee done, because I'm going to go back and, and plead my case again for this county, all I'm saying is that it's dynamic. You don't pass something knowing that it's a strict document, you can only do it in, you don't bind future courts either, so I think the thing to do is we just create a document that looks good for the administration that, that we have.
You go back in your shoes and pick, Commissioner, I think, I know what you're saying, and I, and I agree.
But priority's good.
I think that, yeah, priority's good, but I think once it gets to us, you know, we might say, well, you know what, I've got money to do county road sixty-seven, I don't have money to do sixty-five, but I'm going to do sixty-seven, because it's in my precinct. You can do one in your precinct, whatever you want, but you're not going to be able to do-
It's a blueprint, guys, it's just a blueprint, it gives you a roadmap as to where we're going, but the priority for roads happens to exist without, with totally, as clean as it possibly can, because it was done by Juan, and it was done this year under our direction, and just so you know, it was done with the purposes of getting our transportation fee done, which we didn't get it done, but the idea was, if we do get it done, and we took that to Austin, what would these ten look like with, with complete? And just so you know, that ten has already changed because of CDBG funds, that we've actually took some of those top ten roads, three out of the four CDBG funds came from our top ten list. So the truth is, you have a lot of information here, we just got to ask for it.
These are those three CDBG.
They're the, okay, there you go. So you see, within your top thing, you kind of have to know, look at your funding source, because they're, they'll also give you a little bit of a roadmap.
I'm finishing one off today.
And if we don't get any of those, then that changes again. Do you see what I'm saying? So the plan is a dynamic document, it's changing every year. We only adopt it for the year that we're in, because it's got to be revised every year, because your funding sources are changing every year. And, and this is something that all governmental entities do that work with infrastructure, that they're constantly re- in fact, it's the engineer's nightmare, ask Juan, but you're constantly making him revamp, 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 because you might have a TIF fund for one road, county commissioner might say, I'm taking on that road, so that capital improvement plan is constantly being worked on, but what you're supposed to do here, and get lost in the weeds, I, I love it, I'm excited you're going to look at every line item, but, but definitely don't get lost too much in that, what you're really trying to get a feel for is how much these major projects are going to cost, and where you're going to look for dollars to help tackle them. And then, just like agendas get brought up every day, you'll get the final say-so as a court to say which one really goes first and second and third.
Let's, let's-
Well, but, hold on, but Judge, and what you're saying is fine if that's how the court's going to look at it, and if, 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 in other words, county roads to me should be prioritized by Juan without political intervention, and then we can, as you said, that can go different directions, if I've got money for a road in mine, or Joe's got-
Yeah.
That, I get that, I understand that, but it would certainly be nice to have a, a, an uninfluenced, an uninfluenced look at, at these roads to start with, and we can argue that anyway if we want to, and, and if we're not going to itemize and prioritize all two hundred and eighty, then that needs to be kind of more of as an appendage, because the plan that we adopt is the stamp of approval, that we're saying, these are the court's approval, so if we're going to just, if we're just going to do it in, in a big picture category, we can certainly do that, but I don't think then the two hundred and eighty-four line items should be part of what we pass, because I might not agree with ten of the ones on some of those appendages, but I don't want to get stuck in the weeds.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, so we've, I'm just trying to figure out, to come up with a process that, that's, that's a fair representation of what the court's saying, because when you, once you pass something, you are saying, you're right, you don't bind future courts, but, but, but you still are saying, here's our roadmap.
There's our roadmap.
And you don't want to have to deviate-
And we hope that future courts follow it, because that's actually how you get something accomplished.
Right, and that's the point, we're trying to make it a good roadmap to where future courts will go, okay, this makes sense, let's just keep following it and just keep recodifying it, so, anyway.
Yeah, I think Juan's going to help you a lot, when you see those top ten lists, and then you might have to give him the whole top, just give him everything, but just star the top ten or something, so they could, so the whole, and get, whatever you give to one commissioner, give it to all, but make it part of the RICO thing, it'll make it so much nicer for, for you if it's, if it's all done at one time.
Judge, may I make some comments?
Yes, sir.
Kyle, could you go to the thirty project list? I just had a couple of questions. With the percentages on the left-hand side?
Is this, is this the-
The, the summary slide at the beginning?
Yes.
With the, with, yeah, right there. I wanted to ask you about countywide accessibility projects round one, just to expand on that for the court. Round one is the top ten facilities of New Oasis County that are also polling locations that we met about, and you know the amount of funding in there. With new estimates on the courthouse, are you then suggesting?
No, I'll, what I'll add here to there, so we don't go down the wrong path, is the countywide accessibility projects round one, those are projects that were not in a facility that was getting renovated, so that does not include, that, that line item does not include the county courthouse round one, that county courthouse round one is in the county courthouse project.
Okay, and then-
These are all basically standalone round one projects that weren't grouped as a CIP project.
That's why the number's so low, because it's already embedded inside the courthouse project.
And then, let's go one line down. As you know, we, it was actually Edward and I that sort of arbitrarily assigned projects in two, three, four, and five, and I provided you that list. So what you're suggesting is, you've actually been able to assess some costs that covers every county facility ADA-wise, and you put a price tag of one point two million on it. That's amazing.
For the projects that were, for the projects that fell outside of any other potential project package, those are like, those are your standalone rounds two through five. And, and it's a, and it's a ballpark based on some site observations and based on what we know about the description of the actual, hey, we got to do grab bars and toilet paper holders at this facility, you know, that, for a ballpark number, we put a line item cost in there for that.
Tyner, that, that doesn't include, for instance, anything that was two, three, four, or five in one of the other-
Needs to come up to the mic. Needs to come up to the mic.
Andres, go ahead and come on up, just because it, for the video purposes, go ahead and clarify.
Yes.
And, and Tyner's our ADR, ADA's our, so that's why he's asking.
So that does, if there's any round two, three, four, or five in any of the other facilities-
Oh.
-in the courthouse, in the, um-
So, so they go along with the other project?
They're embedded in, these are just ADAP items that aren't included, that didn't fall into one of the other facilities that's on this list.
Perfect, uh, perfect example is the records warehouse. The records warehouse is the last page on, in your packet, that's the lowest ranked priority, and if we were considering that records warehouse project and all the needs associated with it, we've got an estimate in there of eight point six million dollars. Now, before you go and- And if we were considering that records warehouse project and all the needs associated with it, we've got an estimate in there of 8.6 million dollars. Now, before you go and spend 8.6 million dollars at that facility, you'll know that it's got roof issue, roof leak issues. It's got, it doesn't have a sprinkler system inside the facility. It's got ADA round three or four projects was identified. That accessibility project is in the records warehouse building. But you would not want to lump that records warehouse accessibility improvements inside the round two, three, four, five project because there's a big decision that needs to be made about the records warehouse. And that's why we have this additional project consideration down here. Practical use of the facility and the needs for future functionality should be considered as an alternate in other, rather than continued use of the facility.
If it's not our warehouse, do we need to include it?
What's that?
That really building is not ours.
Yeah, we wouldn't spend 8 million on buildings not ours.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you might say 8 million, but really.
Build a building.
It's not really our building. So we're leasing that building. I think we're paying too much for it, but we're leasing it. So we wouldn't, we would never spend 8 million dollars or 6 million dollars, but 2 million dollars or a million dollars. So I think that number is kind of misleading for.
Well, on this particular one, the problem is, is they're saying right now, you're either going to continue to lease it.
Our, our understanding of the facility was that yes, you leased the facility. It's got all these problems with it. The roof leaks. Your county documents, your record documents are in this facility and the person who you lease it from isn't addressing any of these issues that need to be improved at the facility.
You say we probably need to get out of there.
Yeah.
Absolutely. You need to get somebody, you need to get a record company to come in and scan all these documents and put them in a, a cloud storage or something like that. Get rid of these, get, get rid of this facility.
That's right.
But without, without knowing how much needs you have at this facility, you wouldn't know to make that decision.
And, and the thing is, is that we don't have a, it's, it's the laws that we're subject to that require no water in there. Do you see what I'm saying? So it, without understanding what his investment would have to be, he would never spend 8.6 million. So you have to understand how to use the document, right? It, it is a little tricky, but it, that's not going to happen on any other one but the records. But Kyle and I actually had a separate discussion just on the records because it is a leased facility, but.
So we did our best to include some of these additional project considerations. So going back to the records warehouse, explanation of why you need this project. It's a large repurposed facility. It's the old bread, bread manufacturing facility, right? You need a more modern facility. You need a, a comprehensive facility assessment or a study to implement relocation of the records warehouse. So digest that and, and hear that or read that as a call to action. Or else spend 8, 8.6 million dollars at a facility that you don't own, that somebody else isn't doing the improvements on.
And again, that's, that is a unique one because by law, we cannot allow certain climate situations to exist, certain water situations to exist, or certain ADA. And we're veiling ourselves of this facility where the owner has no interest in any of those things.
And we tried, I mean, Mr. Pusley, when he was here, worked on that for a long time, trying to get, and the court did, trying to get a new building and it, and then it just kind of fell, I don't, it fell off the radar for a while. I mean, it was just, it's a, it's a horrible deal, but it's, you know, there, there was a deal, we thought at one point that was going to work and it fell off the table and didn't work.
Well, can we not have the documents, Judge, copied? And, and then from then on have them copied and not have to have that facility?
So I know it would cost some.
Part of it is you can't get the elected officials to destroy documents that they could destroy. That's been a huge issue.
Right, so.
And we can't do it for them.
So this, this is exactly how it's supposed to work. I was just about to say, hello, everybody, this is how it works. That, yes, so, so basically this particular records warehouse might move up to number one, for instance, if you're considering that which is required under the law or, or failure to, to do so, right? So we would look at.
The courthouse, the old courthouse maybe?
Well, the digitization is what Commissioner Vaughn's asking about. And the answer is at least for 50% of it, yes, because we're storing documents that, that are just being stored right now. And then if the, you'll remember the Elizabeth that came told us it would be 30 years of scanning before we would catch up. So there's, this, this is an example of where, whether CIP reveals a terrible situation, right? So now what happens is that we all, Tyner hears all of our angst about it. And we have an agenda item that says, we're going to authorize, you know, Michael to go RFP the digitization of as many records as we can and therefore, and.
Couple million dollars on digitizing things and you've saved.
Yeah, it might cost 8 million to digitize it. I mean, it's a lot of stuff.
But that there's four.
It might be better than being in a 1955 facility.
And a four, and, and, well, and there's 14 people scanning, so there's 14 FTEs. And then on top of that, but we have had risk management, just so commissioners know. I had Timothy, when this came up earlier, we had Timothy investigate leasing a new building. What buildings are available for the square footage we need and, and at what price? And so we determined from that little exercise that there really wasn't anything available, that we did that maybe 30 days ago. Otherwise, I would have put it on the agenda and gotten us to lease a new building. But I think that what's happening is that I think CIP will reveal the need to build a, a proper records warehouse management office and, or facility, I guess is the better word, not office, facility. And then again, how do we address those needs? Well, we look to see what our funding sources are.
And Judge.
You do that 60% of items that can be shredded.
Right. And that's the problem, Judge. We've had workshop after workshop on this issue. I mean, ad nauseam, this court has talked about this. And the problem with it is, is we can't get the elected officials to shred documents because there is, and Joe may be right, it may be 60% of what's in there is not necessary.
Right.
We do not need it anymore. I don't know what the percentage is.
So there's ways that I can say to the county attorney, county attorney, on behalf of New Oasis County, I would like for you to seek a DEC action to declare the right that New Oasis County has to destroy these documents. And we get it out of the hands of, of them, or we ask the Attorney General for assistance, or we do something that we use.
That may be a better route. That may be the first route is to find out legally what we can do. Good, good, good point.
You know, and we're going to find a solution because.
Because God, it's killing us.
It, yes. And that's why Elizabeth kind of came in. And she's an excellent records manager, by the way, and she understands what she needs and she's begging for help. And that's why the first thing we did was just say, can we move?
And let me say too, I'm not trying to throw elected officials under the bus, but, but at the same.
They have a concern that's valid.
Right. Well, they, sort of, but part of it is timing and money and all those kinds of things. And they're going, look, we don't have time to go over there and do this. And, and so it, this, this is kind of a, you know, chicken and an egg thing, but it's, it's a serious issue. The, the legal issue has not come up before. So if there is a way, and I think the judge has a good point, Laura, for, for us to legally attack what we can do with those documents. And you know what? The elected officials may, they say, great, that takes it off our plate anyway. Then you guys are getting a decision and they may love that.
They want an order, right?
Absolutely.
They want an order.
Respect that order.
And the idea is, 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 you know, don't look at it from, you know, have we ever done it before? The answer is no. Otherwise, it would have been done. Look at it from what are other jurisdictions, how have other jurisdictions handled it? What can we do? This is a, you know, be creative. I don't want to hear, oh, they have the right to do it. That's, that's not the right answer. The right answer is call the Attorney General's office, ask for assistance and see what they recommend us doing because there, there are laws that say misdemeanors have to be held for five years and felonies for this.
But the AG is just an opinion. I, I like the DECA action. I mean, you know, and I mean, you get, let, let the electeds know that we're, we're doing this just to help.
Well, the thing is, somebody has to have political courage in the room, you know? And that's what this court is all about. So we're gonna, we can certainly do that. But again, it doesn't come up unless we get this in front of us and we go, there's a dollar amount to all the decisions we make that, that are costing the county. So.
How big a building is this? Does anybody know?
It's enormous. I'll tell you right now. It's.
60,000 or 68,000?
I've got it right here.
Well, Judge is pulling that up. Another one, if you flip backwards a page is an annual countywide roof replacement. That was just a, a money set aside each year that, that Juan identified. Before we go and set aside that money every year, let's do a facility assessment and see which roofs really need to be replaced. Let's figure out which, which facilities need prioritization to have a roof replacement rather than just putting a, a dollar value associated with it. And that's not to, to call Juan out for, that's just a great example of you need a comprehensive, long-term facilities plan.
Okay, so Judge, Commissioner Jag, you would have won the Price is Right. It's 54,000 square feet. He was closer. And we pay 14,850 dollars a month. That's 27 cents a square foot. So that's why everyone thinks it's, it looks right on paper. So from the auditor's perspective, he'll tell you, hey, we're doing great because he's looking at how much you're paying per square foot. But of course, we signed a 10-year lease. It expired in January 2016. Over that time, we've spent 1.78 million dollars. And we've paid 2.168 overall in rental fees.
And Judge, I think we could.
Unbelievable.
I think truly, we could get that 50, and it's, and that space is not configured very well either. So I think we could get that, and I don't know, but I.
Oh, yeah, we don't need that whole, that's just.
I think we could get 54,000 square feet down to 10 or 12.
You're right.
There's buildings like that you can lease all over town. 54,000, what we're not, no. So, so again, the legal angle, Laura, please bring us something back that says what we can do legally. Again, not trying to circumvent the elected to tell them what we're doing. And I think hopefully they'll understand we're trying to help them. And if we can get that thing down to a 10 to 15, and maybe if it's 15,000 square feet, we can find that kind of thing and.
Well, we should be looking for one now. It's already expired.
Well.
That should be a priority. This is ridiculous.
Agreed.
And I'm going to have Timothy send all of this to everybody. He actually did, I just don't see it here. He showed me, because we didn't ask for 54,000 because Elizabeth gave him a, a guesstimate on what square footage we did need. But I don't know why, but it's not showing up here on the choices he gave me. But he basically said he didn't have anything, but I, I'm sure it's here. I just can't find it. But so we have, I mean, when, when Elizabeth came and made that presentation is, is afterwards. But I was waiting to see what, what this also revealed, so.
Heck, Judge, if we're going to build a new medical examiner facility.
You got it.
We can build a storage facility in there.
Yes, sir. Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
I mean, you know, just throwing it out.
Yes. No, it's already in the head. Yes, very good. Any other good example in the time that we have left? I mean, anybody else want to tackle one that just looks interesting to them, just to see the background? Remember, he can pull up any backup data on his computer right now.
I'm trying to.
Just for, not for fun, but for.
And I guess you didn't include the old courthouse on here, right? You just didn't even do that one.
No, we didn't.
That's fine. We got a, we got plenty of reports on that. Go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
The, the fairgrounds, Annabell.
You want to pull that one?
There's, you know, there's a lot of discussion of what to do. There's been interest that's been expressed over the last several years, especially to repurpose, reuse, or just outright demolish the, the fairgrounds. And so we're limited. We're going up to what, 20, 20? I mean, we haven't done it seven years or so, Tyner, or Juan. Do you know how many more years we have left before?
On the bonds, you mean?
The old part of, no, the old part of the fairground.
Oh, the fair, I'm sorry, of the baseball stadium, not the fairgrounds.
Okay.
I'm looking at the title you all give here, at the stadium.
I was kind of excited.
I was like, oh, my gosh.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Sorry.
It says Borchers Stadium at Fairgrounds. I've never seen that title before, so that threw me off. So I'm just looking at the last part of it. So the stadium. So the baseball field, Aviator Field. It's not Borchers Stadium either. It's Aviator Field. So there's been talk about that being repurposed, reused in, in the area to kind of tie in with the commercial interests we have there. Next to the outlets, there's been other companies that have come in and expressed interest. But all we can tell them is, look, you either buy out how much we owe left to, to pay off for the facility, or you have to wait.
Are you talking about the debt, Commissioner?
I'm talking about the debt.
Yeah, thank you.
And so, so that, that's something that I would say should be a concern because I know there's description of what we need to upkeep. I know we're using it. Edward picked a bad day to have an anniversary, so sorry, Edward, that you're out of town. But it's, to me, you know, it's, we, we're doing, by the way, our staff does excellent work. I mean, they keep up the facility at a great level.
Absolutely.
So whenever we have a need, it's being used. London used it, Aguado used it in my precinct, so it's.
Robstown.
Robstown has used it in the past. So there's a lot of use in the baseball field. There's been football field use. There's been even some soccer games or proposed soccer games out there. So there is some. But I think this is one of those projects too that we got to look at. You know, what is the lifespan of it? And I know that we still need to put some money into it to upkeep. And until someone buys us out on the debt side or we, we finally meet our obligations as a county to pay it off. And I'm not suggesting that be torn down, just saying that's been the interest, you know? If not us directly, then our partners at the city of Robstown have been asked about that. There's, there's, that's a great hotspot right there, that, that area along I-69. So that would be just another area I think we would need to be concerned with. That, I don't know if that's what this takes measure of as far as project priority ranking. I mean, I don't know if that is what pushed it down the list because it's, to me, a shorter term.
So that's.
Project or, or future that it has.
Information that we weren't privy to.
Yeah.
But to have that subjective information and your input here in this workshop is great to understand. Okay, look, we've got about $5 million in needs at this facility. And we haven't walked around it lately. I was just there last month and it's been pretty bad disrepair. The dugouts need to be replaced. The, the stands need to be this and that. The rent, a, a complete renovation of the suites probably needs to happen to bring it up to a standard that you would want to attract people to have. There's scoreboard replacement, LED, switching the LED lights or switching to LED lights. Those are, those are all real projects or real line items in this list that you should consider as an investment if you want this facility to be maintained at a level that might have, you know, some of those subjective implications like you were just talking about.
How much do we owe on that?
Well, as part of the debt service, we, we issued out 94 million dollars to build the fairgrounds and the stadium. So we'll have to go through our, our, our debt packets since we refinanced the balances. So I, I don't know the exact amounts what was remaining to be paid off.
And what's attributed to the baseball field? Because that's what you're just talking about.
Yeah, and I want to know how much the baseball field alone.
But do we have to do what John says? Do we have?
Yes, because the, the baseball field and the fairgrounds were, were paid off through debt issuance. If there is a certain requirement, then we have to do what they call a desement of debt.
Meaning we can't, we couldn't repurpose that without having some return or?
If you have to pay off the debt portion of it, and if you do something and selling wise, then the money has to be used a certain way according to the debt proceeds as well as IRS and the rest because we issued the debt.
It'd be interesting to see because I would think that would be the lowest part, because it, it, that, that's, that's got to be the lowest part of that facility. And, and plus some of that 94 million was for land, wasn't it?
It was mostly for the fairgrounds, yes.
For the, but it was for land, like.
The 500 acres.
Right. So in other words, if you, if you.
Where the, where the, where Alamo is, we had, that was sold from what we'd purchased.
Right. So if you broke down that 94 million, I wouldn't think there would be that much attributed to the baseball field because that's the lowest amount of money, because that's just dugouts and bleachers and that's not high construction cost stuff. The land underneath it would be valuable and that has to go towards it. So, so let's say that's 10 million of the 94 million, but you could sell the land for phi. I, you know, there's, that's a great point, John, that we need to do an analysis on this.
That would be like, I think there, there may be others out there. So as we talked about the, the lease of the records warehouse. It's such kind of, you know, sparking interest in my head as far as, this is relatively short-term for a building we own. And I'm not saying, I don't want anybody to go run out and say we're going to sell it or do anything. But I'm just saying, there's been conversations that have been brought up to me, our partners in the city of Robstown, who, you know, there, there's companies who are really interested in building some pretty neat attractions in that corridor. And so they have specifically mentioned that property. And so I, I get frustrated anytime I see a, a government project done where you invest money, five, 10 years later, you just raise the whole area, the street, the building, whatever, and then you got to build something new. Or it, it's just, to me, that's not a good return on investment. I, we do need to keep it up. There is some disrepair. The kids still love it when they get to go play and use the facility. But yeah, there's some areas that are just, if they're going to be repaired, it's going to cost us money. But I just worry the dollar amount that, that's projected here, it's a good chunk of what we owe left in debt. So at least for this chunk, and, and that's what it was explained to me. So I would just say for this or any others that we really need to kind of monitor and watch. And, and like the judge said, and like y'all said, you know, this is part of that conversation so we can have and, and look into it further. that conversation so we can have and, and look into it further. But Edward would be the one to really give us more on that, since he has his staff out there every day.
Well, and take a look at the, um, maybe you can bring up, I think you had it a second ago, Kyle, you had the detail maybe for Commissioner, he could see it.
The insured replace, the insurable replacement value that, uh, Mr. Everest gave us, um, it didn't have every, it didn't have like the insurable value or the replacement value of the lights. The three or five different line items that had an insurable replacement value, which I guess y'all insured through an insurance company.
We do.
It's two point one million dollars.
Right, and it's, it's-
The insured value of the-
So, but to rebuild the stadium, you know, would be like twenty-five, you know, it would be a very high value. I don't know what your asset, uh, what you ranked, I mean, what you called, what did you have on your, um, your raw asset number there for the stadium? Did you have a, a starting point there?
So we didn't do any building valuation-
Okay.
Calculations.
Just looked at insured values.
Just, I mean, it, that was just a consideration. It was another piece of debt.
Right, and this is another tool for risk management. So risk management does the best they can, but this is a classic example of having an undervalued asset out there. Because two million wouldn't begin to cover even what's wrong, which was a blown transformer in addition to all the other infrastructure needs. However, I do wanna recall, and this is why I want all of us to maybe make our own little one through thirty spreadsheet, so you can have your notes, because the subjective information that he just gave you is very valuable. And I'm about to give you a little bit more on this. Several months back, we formed a Northwest Asset Management Committee, okay? The, the, the goal was, after CIP, to gather these folks and, um, really try to find, they have some thoughts and uses for this baseball stadium that might be able to defer or to find a public-private partnership, or a public-public-private partnership. There's been some discussions about whether or not, um, if you could get a JuCo League going there, whether you could defer the cost to a community college, you know, to be able to use this facility. So now we've identified that there's five million dollars' worth of improvements that would be a part of those negotiations. Without this, we don't have a starting point. And that's why it's so valuable. You can't create a committee, all the ideas in the world mean nothing if you don't know how to go negotiate properly. So that's kind of an interesting, you know, interest there.
Unique project.
It's a unique project, it's a unique funding source that could be, then we become tenant again, right? We become lessor again. But now we know that whoever invests might be having to invest five million, or we might say, if we invest fifty percent and you invest fifty percent, then we will have a deferment of your lease payment for the next, whatever, so many years. But I wanna go back to your, um, bond question. What you need to do is, we need to send a quick email to Noe, oh, Tyner's not here, and we'll ask, um, Strata Inahosa, because they're super, um, you'll be surprised at some of the answers, like, even though you think you can parcel it out and it's just a portion of, if the bond had just a listing of everything, you're gonna be subjected to everything. That's my experience at the port. You are not gonna be able to say, oh, the baseball stadium was only one million of the ninety million. It's not gonna work that way. But I think our expert on this is Noe. So we're gonna, we're gonna send that email, and I guess, Teresa, if you don't mind taking those notes, cause Tyner stepped out of the room. But again, that's the purpose, is to be able to go through these documents, and what kind of good information can you give land back that then might either create a fifth rubric where we rerun the, the prioritization? That's what I'm gonna call special knowledge. What special knowledge do I have, or does Commissioner Mottis have, about the fairgrounds that now have, rank it from one to five, again? And then we rerun the percentiles.
Just to be clear, Commissioner Mottis, you're not interested in selling that portion? You wanna just, you're interested in perhaps repurposing and actually leasing?
Well, I mean-
And the reason why I ask is because, uh, in the sales agreement with the outlets, they have a right, first right of refusal if we sell the land. So I just wanna make sure I, and I know what-
I, I think a lot of what, what's been speculated or, or explored out there, um, has been either buy, you know, buy it outright, or lease it, or however, um, they can work their numbers out. So, I mean, I would be open to any way. I, I just, I wanted to throw it out there, cause I thought that that warehouse was an excellent, um, segue to this, in that, you know, how, how much do we commit on projects that could be short-term? That's, I think, my biggest concern for any of the projects we look at, is putting money into something that we may not keep for much longer, and then, to me, I mean, it was needed, but it's almost kind of wasted money. We're throwing it away in a, a good amount of money in a short period of time. So that would be with this. I mean, it may not go anywhere, it may not work, Judge, like you said. I mean, we, we need to hear from Noe as far as, can it even be parceled out, or is there any provision in there? But, um, I figured just while we were talking about that, just to kind of bring this one up, cause I think it's a excellent, uh, example of there is, and it has been active interest in it at some point or another, uh, as far as to use that facility, or to, um, raise it and build something new there, so.
And since you just happened to open the door on that, you might wanna look on the bankruptcy, because of course the outlets went into bankruptcy, and were purchased in bankruptcy, and since we have a bankruptcy specialist, you might throw in that document to see if it survived, if that covenant survived in bankruptcy. It may not have even survived.
Yeah, but it may be muted, it's that-
Right, all I'm saying is that that's-
But if they want it, and they can buy it, and we can figure out how to parcel it out, I mean, we ought to at least look at that, and, you know, I mean-
Right, those are all your, that's why all these good little, that's the personal knowledge, you know, what do you know, what do you, but I can tell you, cause I was out there yesterday, uh, I would not bank on that.
Yeah.
At all. But, but anyway.
I think the clause was there, uh-
On the outlet piece of it.
Right.
That in case we're gonna build something out there, sell it, build, it wouldn't be compatible to, you know, to them.
Right.
But if they're out, they're out.
It's a valuable, it's a valuable piece of property, it's just whether or not we can-
It, it's a va, yeah, exactly. The idea is, what is this? And what's exciting about this is that, and I'm not suggesting, um, that you make it just about you. I love when we, when we do projects that we're, we're looking at the county with our county eyeglasses on. But I think it would be great, in the special knowledge box, if you'll take these, one through thirty, and do the deep dive into your own precinct. You are the best experts about what it is that you know and can bring to the table. So Carolyn, on Hilltop, you're gonna, you're gonna wanna study that detail like crazy because of the roof, uh, you know, requirements that you've got working, roof requirements, the roof issues that you have working out there, and, you know, John's gonna look at the fairgrounds, and, you know, we're all gonna have these, what I call special knowledge, and I think it can be helpful. But at least we now know where to start. You can't take the universe and dissect it unless you have some way to say, we all used, and by the way, the system was applied uniformly, correct?
Yep.
Right, so that gives you-
And I'll, and I'll tell you as an example, um, from my own personal examples, um, where we've had success with, um, community college districts and school districts, uh, is when everybody comes together in consensus in saying, we're, we're going at this together. We all recommend this project, that project, that project, that is our collective priority. And so, the quicker you can come to a consensus, the more, and the more uniform approach you can have to bring this to the public and, and to ask for certificates of obligation or other funding sources, that's when you'll really get success, and that's when, um, you know, those, those large projects can get done, so.
And, and that was really why we were strategic about asking Noe to come right before, cause it served two purposes. One, to look at where we sat as to, you know, in relation to our debt, and to our overall financial profile. And then, of course, he actually ran a scenario for a fifty million dollar CO, and what that would look like. And when you put that in context with the needs, you can actually see a path forward. Not for everything, but you can see a path forward, which is, which is interesting. In other words, it was timely, and that was done, uh, with purpose. It was not a coincidence. It was, it was done purposefully. And I was gonna put Judge Etheridge on the spot. Judge, you, Judge, court recognizes Eddie Etheridge, former county judge of Hays County. Judge, you work for land, so I wanna disclose that. Come on to the, but as a county judge, you use CIP, and what happens next? What does, give me, we've never done this before, you're from a county judge's, put your, take off your land hat, put your county judge hat back on for me.
Well, the, the real answer to your question is, you, you know what, you, nobody knows what's gonna happen next until you all decide what's gonna happen next.
Right, correct.
But, but theoretically, um, you, you're, a CIP is, as you mentioned earlier, it is a living, fluid document that has to be renewed, reviewed at least every two years, and preferably every year, just as you head into your budget workshops. You go back, you look at your CIP and say, okay, now let's, let's work towards the budget that speaks to the CIP. But in addition to that, many communities, cities and counties of all sizes will eventually develop a transportation master plan, a drainage master plan, a parks master plan in the CIP, and that becomes, um, a, a, an overall master plan for the county, or a growth management plan, whatever you want to call it, for, for the entity. I've never dealt with a county of this size that did not already have some of those things in place, in particular the CIP. So how you move forward with that, you're gonna kind of have to feel your way. As you and I talked early on, to get you a CIP that really is actually just getting to you the starting point of how you begin to, to stop the, the degradation of your, of your, uh, tax rate, um, begin to put a halt to deferred maintenance issues and things of that sort. You just have to have this CIP in place. You will now have that, and, but don't think that the work is all done, because it-
We're just beginning.
You're just beginning. This really is just getting you to a starting point.
But it does unfold into, and Carolyn, Commissioner Ron and I were just talking about this just two days ago, as it pertained to one particular item. But in order to understand what your county's doing, where you're planning and where you're heading, this gives way to these, we were talking, I think, drainage and growth management, but this gives way to a drainage master plan.
Right.
And, or, or whatever it is that, that, you know, you need.
Also keep in mind, and, and Commissioner Chesney has mentioned this multiple times, a, a CIP is, is an economic-
Document.
Document. It is a policy document that you have to deep dive into, and it is, in fact, a political document, that each of you have a different view of the politics that occurs within your precinct, and how that's going to ramp up into a, to a future bond issue, for example. And one of the things I'd listen to while it goes about prioritization, particularly when you get into roads and facilities that are pretty much select to, to your individual precinct, you, you try to prioritize those in terms of what your precinct needs. And a perfect example, of course, is roads. You're gonna get a long list of roads that have been analyzed, and, and Juan has put numbers together on, and what might be, um, your number one priority in your precinct, Commissioner Von, when considered with each of the others commissioners' priority one, how are you going to get those to become the county's number one road?
Correct. That's what you were talking about, Brent.
Yeah, so, so that, that's when it gets into making sausage, both policy-wise and, and political-wise, is how do each of you work together to get your top two or three projects where they need to be within the priority of the overall county structure?
Yeah.
And it just takes a lot of work, uh, and a lot of patience. And you also mentioned that you hope that the engineers were not trying to give you a political document, and, and as a non-engineer, having worked for the engineering industry, never rely on an engineer to give you any kind of political advice, because they do not do it well.
And that's okay?
No offense, Juan.
That's okay, that's what I don't wanna, that's, you know, I got enough giving me political advice.
Right, so-
That's, that's help, no, I just, it's just nice to, you know, hear, we've talked about this for such a long time, and, and as it related to the port, and I just learned through experience and having the sausage being made, we didn't have precincts, but we had competing ideas at the Port of Corpus Christi on which capital project should be advanced first. So whether it's precincts, or whether it's just you believe in, you know, you know, this type of loading dock, or this type of infra, rail infrastructure, it's the same thing. And I think what you're saying to us as good advice is that we're gonna have to get, to come together. But I think our step leaving today, we're gonna close here in five minutes, um, I'm gonna let everyone kind of have their, a little bit of a closing remark, is that our next step is really to spend some good time with this document, and get back as soon as we can, so we can provide Kyle and the team any other, that one last missing link, so to speak. And it may or may not change anything, but at least it's information that as part of the CIP plan, if not, if not specified, may not be the living document that we want for future courts. And so we, we need to put in there, um, well, what John just really, uh, revealed, which is very important, that there's a debt encumbrance on this particular property, might be a covenant on this property, you know, that has an impact on how we treat that in the prioritization. So I think that's where we're headed next. And as far as time, if it's okay, I'll let the commissioners guide to me, how much time they wanna, is a week good enough to give you all?
Want a week, two weeks?
What is your-
We can have a binder for you. For what, for another workshop, or by Monday?
Well, to get some comments back, even if it's not a workshop, back to Kyle, uh, that, what I'm gonna call the fifth box, the fifth element, going back to our movies, but the fifth element would be the element that you bring to this conversation. I'm gonna encourage all of you to set up a time with Kyle to meet, but having said that, it's helpful if you spend time with the document and get your thoughts down, and put that, put that together. Does a week, is that too quick?
Yeah, I'd like a couple.
Two weeks? Okay, two weeks, Tyner? I'll let Tyner work on that. But within the two weeks, you're gonna get some sneak peeks, right?
Right, but we don't-
Go ahead and call it.
Also like the backup material that we've asked.
Oh, that'll be coming within twenty-four hours, I bet. We'll get you that by Monday.
All right.
Monday or Tuesday.
By Monday, yeah. Monday, Tuesday at the latest.
It's seventy-eight hours.
Seventy-eight hours.
Business day, sir, business days, business day, sir.
All right.
Uh, okay, let's, let's, I'll, um, just start with closing remarks, and then ask commissioners to end up, and then we'll adjourn promptly on time here, and that is, thank you for the presentation, and for the, um, for the backup documentation, and for the take what is really just King Kong, and really streamline it in a way that I think I can spend real quality time understanding and making notes and comments, and it's, it's, it's daunting, okay? But as I told somebody, it's also invigorating. I could take the approach that we have done not in the light most favorable to the previous, going all the way back, we haven't done a very good job maintaining or repairing a lot of our facilities. We, we've had to defer maintenance for a variety of reasons. But I think what I'd rather concentrate on is, hey, these are our needs as they exist today. Here are our challenges, but here are our funding sources, but there are a tremendous amount of assets to protect and to manage, some to get rid of, some to consolidate. And I see this as the most, the best way to begin this challenge. And like I said, it doesn't, it doesn't scare me, it invigorates me, it motivates me, and, and I think that we all recognize the dollars that are gonna be needed to tackle even a third of the projects that are very serious. So once we can take that, digest it, get it back to the public, they too will benefit because they'll understand, uh, how we make decisions and, and why. So anyway, Tyner, why do you go next?
Judge, I just might make a comment, I'm looking at the calendar, and we have a bunch of budget workshops, court meeting, three weeks may look better than two weeks. Three weeks may look better than two weeks. I'm just possibly suggesting.
Whatever works, Tyner. Whatever works, Tyner. It'll give everybody here a time to, to meet with, with multiple times if you need to. But definitely use this document sooner rather than later. It will help you, I think tremendously, even in budget. Okay, anyone have any final comments or remarks for Kyle and the whole team?
I just want to say in general, I agree. We haven't had this in the past. And thank Judge Canales for really taking the lead on this, and we need it. And this is gonna be a document that, that, you know, continues on into the future. We hope to tackle it all soon, but we know reality is, is the cost and the scope of projects. But Judge, thank you, because this is going to help us in the future and really gives us a better grasp of what's needed. And so when we deal with constituents also, we can explain to them, it's on, you know, it's on a projection, it's, you know.
That's a good point.
A few years out, or what have you, and I think most people will be accepting of that, regardless of what they feel the immediate need is. So thanks for, for the work on this and giving us this chance for starting the feedback. I know it's gonna be still a lengthy process, but now we have our homework to do and get with them so that we can really kind of give more detail and specifics on this, so, thank you.
Okay, well, hearing no other major comments, I do want to say that I want to make sure Maria gets a copy of this. She's got a lot of work to do. There's a lot of money and grants that need to be brought in. I think Grants Department, more than any other department, is gonna use this tool as well to be able to identify what source needs help, you know, so. Okay, gentlemen and ladies, thank you so much. We are out. I believe we have mics.